De La Rosa. Dinowitz.
Here.
Felice. Gennaro.
Here.
Gutierrez. Hanif.
Here.
Hanks. Holden.
Here.
Hudson.
Present.
Joseph.
Present.
Krishnan.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Lewis.
Present.
Mamarato.
Present.
Marte.
Here.
Mealy.
Pass.
Thank you. Menon.
Here.
Moya.
Here.
Ariola.
Present.
Abreu. Narcisse.
Present.
Nurse. Osay. Palladino. Powers.
Here.
Wrestler. Riley. Rivera.
Present.
Salam.
Present.
Salamanca. Sanchez.
Presente.
Schulman.
Here.
Nurse. Aviles.
Presente.
Palladino. Stevens.
Here.
Ung.
Present.
De La Rosa.
Here.
Osay.
Present.
Gutierrez.
Presente.
Vernikov. Riley.
Present.
Carr. Williams.
I'm here.
Wan. Jaeger. Zhuang.
Here.
Borelli.
Present.
Farias.
Present.
Speaker Adams.
Present. Thank you. We will now have today's invocation, which will be delivered by Monsignor James Sullivan from the Church of Our Savior, which is located at 59 Park Avenue in Manhattan.
Almighty God, we call you by different names. Draw near. We pray in the season that is sacred to many of us. For Christians, during this holy forty-day season of Lent, we pray, we fast, we increase our charity to draw closer to your holiness and allow that holiness to deepen in our lives. For Muslims, during this holy month of Ramadan, these very same practices draw your people closer to you and to one another. For Jews, in about a month, they will gather for Seder meals in the eight days of Passover to mark a journey out of oppression. But as we raise up these sacred seasons, we must confess to you, our Creator, our Sustainer, that we, your people, are not always so holy, and the words and actions of our lives betray what we mark. And sometimes, we even use them in a perverted way to spew hate and violence on those who call you by different names, worship you in different ways, or wear different gob. We ask your mercy and ask that you help us to amend our ways. Now, Almighty God, we admit our failings, but please permit me, with more than a little trepidation and ready to dodge lightning bolts, to raise up some of your failings. Are you not a God of peace? Where are you in Gaza and Israel? Are you not a God that protects your children? Where are you in Haiti and Mirammar? Are you not a God of solidarity? Where are you in the Sudan and Senegal? Are you not a God of just order? What about Venezuela and Nicaragua? Are you not a God who cares for human rights? Where are you in Russia and China? And are you not a God that protects your children when attacked? Where are you in the Ukraine? So, God, please don't count me too brash for having overstepped. I go on, but I think you get the point. But now, Almighty God, allow me to draw you closer to home, where we need your presence and help because even with our strong efforts, the powers of darkness are great. So, please, protect our city, those who ride our subways, who deliver our food. Oh, and, God, yes, please, a personal prayer of forgiveness for me because I do cuss those on motorbikes when they almost run me over going the wrong way on the streets. I'm sorry. So, help our teachers to teach better, our students to learn better. Help those who struggle to pay their rent, and in these holy seasons, when many voluntarily fast, help those, especially your children, who involuntarily fast. We call that hunger because they do not have enough food to eat. Help those who serve them with the resources needed to feed our hungry neighbors. And, Almighty God, while material things are essential to preserving and enhancing human dignity, so too are the spiritual ones that go to the core of our humanity. Almighty God, reduce our hate and anger at one another, especially when rooted in religious, ethnic, or class differences. Rid us of antisemitism, masochophobia, xenophobia, nimbyism, and every other phobia and ism from our words, actions, and hearts. May our protests be passionate and respectful. Our disagreements, even when intense, be civil. You know, Almighty God, maybe my prayer is just too dark and negative, so let me not forget to say thank you for all the good things you bestowed upon us in this great city. Thank you that we have welcomed almost two thousand newcomers these past two years, and a hundred thousand of them are now making it in our city. And we thank you that thirty-four thousand children are being educated in our schools and that many have access to health care. We thank you that our city and nonprofit workers are moving towards fairer wages, reflected of the hard and dedicated work they do for all of us, and we thank you. In a very basic way, that millions and millions of the city are working every day, caring for their families, using our parks, riding safely our buses and subways, prepare meals for their apartments, and talking to their neighbors. Almighty God, I've rambled on too long, and you're busy. And the members of this council are now turning back to their screens of their devices, so let me end by saying thank you for the dedication of the members of this council and asking your blessing upon them and the people of this great city. Protect them, guide them in integrity for the sake of us all, and let all of us say, amen.
Thank you. I would now like to ask Councilmember Keith Powers to spread the invocation on the record.
Thank you. I want to first welcome Monsignor Sullivan into the chamber. He's been here many times and always provides us with great humor alongside great courage and wisdom. And I also want to acknowledge so much of the work that he is doing alongside Catholic Charities to help those newcomers who are coming to our country looking for assistance and help. And it is the efforts of Monsignor Sullivan, Catholic Charities, and the community they represent that are providing so much assistance to folks right now. Like a good constituent, he complained about e-bikes. I thought I was going to get away from that for a second, but we are always happy to have him, his service, and the work that he does in my district and throughout this city. With that, I'd like to make a motion to spread the invocation in full upon the record and want to wish everyone a very belated but still happy St. Patrick's Day. Thank you.
We will now have the adoption of minutes by Councilmember Carolina Rivera.
I make a motion that the minutes of the stated meeting of February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-four be adopted as printed.
Messages and papers from the mayor?
None.
Communication from city, county, and borough offices?
None.
Petitions and communications?
None.
Land use call-ups?
M thirty-four.
Coupled on call-up votes, I now ask that the clerk take a roll call vote on today's land use call-ups.
Abreu.
Aye.
Ariola.
Aye.
Aviles.
Aye.
Ayala.
Aye.
Banks.
Aye.
Botcher.
Aye.
Brannan.
Aye.
Brewer.
Aye.
Caban. Carr.
Aye.
De La Rosa.
Aye.
Dinowitz.
Aye.
Felice. Aye, and I'm present. You got it. Gennaro.
Aye.
Gutierrez.
Aye.
Hanif.
Aye.
Thank you. Hanks.
Aye, or present.
Thank you. Holden.
Aye.
Hudson.
Aye.
Joseph.
Aye.
Krishnan.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Mamarato.
Aye.
Marte.
Aye.
Mealy.
Aye.
Menon.
Aye.
Moya.
Aye.
Thank you. Narcisse.
Aye.
Nurse.
Aye.
Osay.
Aye.
Thank you. Palladino.
Aye.
Powers. Aye. Caban.
Aye.
Thank you. Wrestler.
Aye.
Riley.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Salam.
Aye.
Salamanca.
Aye.
Sanchez.
Aye.
Schulman.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Ung.
Aye.
Vernikov.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Wan. Jaeger. Aye. Zhuang.
Aye.
Brooks Powers.
Ask permission to vote on everything on today's agenda?
Permission granted.
I vote aye on all.
Thank you. Borelli.
Aye.
Farias.
I vote aye.
Speaker Adams.
I vote aye.
Today's land use call-ups are adopted by a vote of fifty and affirmative and zero and the negative. We will now have communication from Speaker Adrian Adams.
Thank you very much, Madam Majority Leader, and good afternoon, everyone. Before we begin, I do want to acknowledge the deaths of several New Yorkers over these past few weeks. Last Wednesday, eight-year-old Byron Palomino Arroyo was tragically killed by a driver while crossing the street with his ten-year-old brother in Councilmember Moya's district. And on Sunday, we learned about the deaths of two men who were killed prior to an apartment fire in Councilmember Zhuang's district. Our hearts are with their families and their loved ones, as well as those of all other New Yorkers lost during this difficult time. Throughout March, the council has been hosting our preliminary budget hearings to examine agency budgets and the funding needed to support New Yorkers. The hearings continue, and I want to thank all of you for your continued leadership in these hearings, as well as our Finance Division staff for their very hard work. I thank members of the public for adding their voices to this important conversation about the needs of our city. And I want to give a special shout out to our Education Chair Rita Joseph for her marathon hearing yesterday. From ten AM to approximately eleven PM, you all, the voices of educational professionals, advocates, and most importantly, the children, were heard in this chamber, and I thank our Education Chair for her dedication and commitment. As we continue the budget process for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, I encourage all New Yorkers to continue to stay engaged and provide your critical input. Tonight, the council will host our annual Women's History Month celebration right here in the People's House. The doors open at five-thirty PM, and I invite everyone to join us to uplift the contribution of women across the city. You men who get it, please do attend. March twenty-third is Pakistan Day, which commemorates the adoption of the Lahore Resolution that led to the formation of the Nation of Pakistan, and I join all Pakistani New Yorkers who celebrate this day of freedom and independence. This year, Purim is being observed on the evening of March twenty-first. I want to wish our Jewish friends and neighbors a happy and joyous Purim. Chag Purim Samach. March twenty-fifth is Greek Independence Day, and we join our city's vibrant Greek communities in observance of this important celebration. March twenty-fifth is also Holi, the Hindu Festival of Colors. I invite all New Yorkers to join us in celebration of Holi here in the council chambers on Monday evening. March twenty-sixth is Bangladesh Independence Day, marking the day when Bangladesh established its independence as a nation from Pakistan. The council is also hosting a Bangladesh Independence Day celebration next Tuesday, so I invite all New Yorkers to join us here, celebrating the Bangladeshi community. And on March thirty-first, New Yorkers across the city will celebrate Easter, also known as Resurrection Sunday. This season symbolizes renewal and rebirth, and it offers all who celebrate the time to reflect and embark on new beginnings. I want to wish everyone who observes a very happy Easter. Finally, please join me in wishing a happy birthday to Councilmember Chi O'Say, who celebrated yesterday. We're glad you made it today. Councilmember Lincoln Wrestler, celebrating his birthday today. And Councilmember Nantasha Williams, she'll celebrate on March twenty-ninth. Happy birthday, everybody. Two Pisces and an Aries in the house. Now, let's move on to our stated agenda. Today, we will vote on the following land use items. East Ninety-Fourth Street rezoning will facilitate a new forty-story mixed-use building with approximately four hundred eighty-seven housing units, one hundred forty-six of which are affordable with commercial and community facilities on the lower floors in Councilmember Menon's district. The council is modifying the application to strike MIH Option One and requiring MIH Option Two. Brownsville Arts Center and Apartments, an HPD application for rezoning and urban development action area designation, project approval and disposition of city-owned property to facilitate the development of a nine-story building in Councilmember Neely's district. It will include approximately two hundred eighty-three affordable housing units and over twenty-five thousand square feet of ground-floor community facility space to promote local arts and culture. Jennings Hall Expansion will facilitate the development of a new fourteen-story building to expand the existing Jennings Hall senior housing facility with two hundred and eighteen additional new affordable senior housing units and ground-floor commercial space in Councilmember Jennifer Gutierrez's district. The council is modifying the MIH text amendment to remove Option Two, requiring MIH Option One, and adding the deep affordability option for this project. Eighty-eight dash oh-eight Justice Avenue Restrictive Declaration Termination will remove a restriction from nineteen seventy-three that prohibits commercial uses on the site in Councilmember Krishnan's district, which would otherwise be allowed as of right. This will facilitate the conversion of community facility space to commercial use in a portion of a recently completed eighteen-story mixed-use building. Twenty-six dash seventeen Thirty-seventh Avenue rezoning will facilitate a new seven-story mixed-use building with manufacturing and commercial uses in Councilmember Wan's district. Today, we'll also vote on the following pieces of legislation. Introduction three forty-nine, sponsored by Councilmember Sandy Nurse, would clarify that required reports on the removal of individuals experiencing homelessness from public spaces. These services offered and outcomes are to be submitted on a quarterly basis. We thank our staff member, Amenta Kilowan. Introduction two twenty-eight A, sponsored by Councilmember Crystal Hudson, would require the New York City Department for the Aging, or DIFTA, to make information available to older adults about NYC Care, the NYC Health and Hospitals Initiative, to provide low- or no-cost primary health care to income-eligible city residents. DIFTA would be required to provide eligibility guidelines for the initiative, clarify that it is not based on immigration status, and ensure information is available in paper format and at all locations where DIFTA services are provided. We thank our staff members, Christopher Pepe, Nicholas Connell, and Semud Hamid. Introduction forty-five A, sponsored by Councilmember Rita Joseph, would require the Department of Education to report the actual class size of all classes in DOE schools and programs. This bill would also require the DOE to report on a district, borough, and citywide level the number and percentage of students in special programs disaggregated by program type, grade, race, or ethnicity, gender, special education status, and English language learner status. We thank our staff member, Nadia Jean-François. Resolution two fifty-six, sponsored by Councilmember Pirina Sanchez, would declare that the continuation of a public emergency that requires rent control beyond April first, twenty-twenty-four is necessary to protect the public health, safety, and general welfare of New Yorkers. We thank our staff member, Andrew Born. And Introduction six fifty-three A, also sponsored by Councilmember Sanchez, would declare that there is an ongoing housing emergency to extend the rate stabilization law from expiring on April first, twenty-twenty-four to April first, twenty-twenty-seven, based on the declaration of an ongoing housing emergency in New York City. The twenty-twenty-three Housing and Vacancy Survey found that the citywide rental vacancy rate last year was one point forty-one percent, which is the lowest since nineteen sixty-eight. Our city is facing a dire housing crisis, underscoring the importance of extending the city's rate rent stabilization law. We thank our staff members, Taylor Zalone and Austin Malone. Thank you very much for your attention, and now I turn it back over to our Majority Leader.
Thank you, Speaker Adams. We will now move into discussion of general orders. Seeing no members signed up, we will move along with the agenda. Report of special committees?
None.
Reports of standing committees?
Report of the Committee on Aging, Intro two twenty-eight A, New York City Care Program.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Education, Intro forty-five A, class-size reports.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on General Welfare, Intro three forty-nine, homelessness reporting.
Coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Housing and Buildings, Intro six fifty-three A, rent stabilization.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Land Use, LU fifteen and Reso two ninety-five through LU seventeen and Reso two ninety-seven, Brownsville Arts Center and Apartments.
Coupled on general orders.
LU eighteen and Reso two ninety-eight, eighty-eight oh-eight Justice Avenue Restrictive Declaration Termination.
Coupled on general orders.
LU's twenty-four and twenty-five, Jennings Hall Expansion.
Approved with modifications and referred to the City Planning Commission pursuant to Section one nine seventy of the New York City Charter.
LU twenty-six and Reso two ninety-nine, twenty-one seventeen Thirty-seventh Avenue rezoning.
Coupled on general orders.
LU's twenty-seven and twenty-eight, East Ninety-Fourth Street rezoning.
Approved with modifications and referred to the City Planning Commission pursuant to Section one nine seventy of the New York City Charter.
General Orders Calendar, LU twenty-four and Reso three hundred and LU twenty-five and Reso three zero one, Jennings Hall Expansion.
Coupled on general orders.
LU twenty-seven and Reso three oh-two and LU twenty-eight and Reso three oh-three, East Ninety-Fourth Street rezoning.
Coupled on general orders. I ask that the clerk now take a roll call vote on all of the items coupled on today's general orders calendar.
Abreu.
Aye.
Ariola.
Aye.
Aviles.
Aye.
Ayala.
Aye.
Banks.
Aye.
Botcher.
Aye.
Brannan. Brewer.
Aye.
Caban.
Aye on all.
Thank you. Carr.
No on Intro six fifty-three A and I on the rest.
De La Rosa.
Aye.
Dinowitz.
Aye.
Thank you. Felice.
Aye.
Gennaro.
Aye.
Gutierrez.
Aye.
Hanif.
Aye.
Thank you. Hanks.
Aye.
Holden.
Aye.
Hudson.
Aye.
Joseph.
Aye.
Krishnan.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Mamarato.
Aye.
Marte.
Aye.
Mealy.
Aye.
Menon.
Permission to explain my vote, Majority Leader?
Sorry, can you repeat?
Just permission to explain my vote?
Oh, permission granted.
Great, thank you. After extensive negotiations, I'm happy to vote in favor of the first mandatory inclusionary housing project on the Upper East Side. I want to mention that in twenty-twenty-two, there were only fourteen new affordable housing units that were built in my district. The East Ninety-Fourth Street rezoning will lead to an over one thousand percent increase in the number of affordable units. We were able to negotiate two important concepts that are traditionally at odds. Increasing the number of affordable units and ensuring that the building height is contextual. We were able to achieve both. Most importantly, we increased the number of affordable housing units by twenty-nine point three percent, going from a hundred and thirteen affordable units to a hundred and forty-six permanently affordable units. And we decreased the height from four hundred and eighty-four feet to four hundred and fourteen feet, a fifteen percent reduction to make the building more contextual. We secured a commitment for new open green space, a childcare center on the ground floor, and the creation of a community task force to address construction mitigation, as well as an agreement to work with the city on using housing vouchers to increase affordability on this project, as well as entering labor agreements with thirty-two BJ and an agreement to negotiate with the carpenters' union. Amidst an ongoing affordable housing crisis in the city, these are very significant steps for a more equitable and sustainable future for the neighborhood that is in dire need of affordable housing. I want to thank Councilmembers Kevin Riley and Rafael Salamanca and the entire council land use team for their assistance on this, and with that, I vote aye on all.
Moya.
I vote aye.
Thank you. Narcisse.
Aye.
Nurse.
I vote aye.
Osay.
Aye on all.
Palladino.
Aye on all.
Powers.
Aye on all.
Wrestler.
Aye.
Riley.
Aye.
Rivera.
I vote aye.
Salam.
Aye on all.
Salamanca.
Aye on all.
Sanchez.
Aye.
Schulman.
Aye on all.
Stevens.
Aye.
Aye.
Ong.
Aye.
Vernikov.
Aye.
Williams.
I vote aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Zhuang.
Aye.
Borelli.
Vote no on 653A and aye on all.
Parias.
I vote aye on all.
Speaker Adams.
All items on today's general order calendar are adopted by a vote of 50 in affirmative, 0 in the negative, and 0 in the abstentions, with the exception of Intro 653-A, which was adopted by a vote of 48 in the affirmative, 2 in the negative, and 0 abstentions. Introduction and reading of bills.
All bills have been referred to committees as indicated on today's agenda.
Thank you. We will now move into the discussion of resolutions. Seeing no one signed up and no resolutions, we will now have a voice... Sorry, seeing no one signed up, we will now have a voice vote on today's resolution. If you wish to vote against or abstain from today's resolution, please notify the Legislative Documents Unit by email or by approaching the dais. I'll now read today's resolution into the record. Resolution 256 determines that a public emergency requiring rent control in the city of New York continues to exist and will continue to exist on and after April 1st, 2024. With all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. We will now move into general discussion, and I'd like to call and recognize Councilmember Lewis, followed by Lee, then Joseph. I'd now like to recognize Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Speaker, Majority Leader, and colleagues. Today, it is my pleasure to introduce Intro 690, which would create a mental health first aid program, a publicly accessible training that would equip New Yorkers with the tools to identify and respond to the early signs of mental health and substance use disorders. A previous version was launched in 2016 with the previous administration and trained more than 155,000 New Yorkers. At its peak, 25 city agencies were involved and trainings were offered every day of the week in multiple languages. Our mental health crisis has become even more severe after this program was suspended in early 2020 because of the pandemic. Four years have passed, but we have yet to see the return of this training. Community-based organizations that received this guidance years ago talked about all sorts of cultural and organizational changes. They more proactively and frequently corrected misperceptions about mental health. They developed their own training and created instructors within their own organizations to provide culturally competent care to their communities. And then there are the practical benefits: all the emergency room visits that have been averted, the lives saved. 90% of surveyed trainees used these skills in the past six months, and on average, they helped approximately four individuals each. Based on all these self-reports, about 6,000 people were assisted and guided by trainees to more specialized help. I was a leader of a nonprofit that served the immigrant community, and I'm a witness to this kind of program, and I saw firsthand how it benefited community and religious leaders and our staff, who had the most face-to-face time with New Yorkers experiencing crisis. I hope you'll join me in bringing this program back to create a real kind of social, emotional support. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd now like to recognize Councilmember Lewis, followed by Joseph and Aviles.
Thank you, Speaker and Madam Majority Leader, for the opportunity to discuss five bills. I'd like to introduce today the first two in honor of Women's Hurst Story Month, though we know every day is Women's Hurst Story Day. Resolution 282, designating March 24th annually as Women of Color in Tech in the City of New York to recognize their contributions, especially women of color, to technology industry and acknowledge their challenges that they face. And Reso 280, designating November 30th annually as Shirley Chisholm Day in the City of New York to recognize her contributions as an educator, activist, and elected official who served the people of New York City with passion and dignity. Additionally, Intro 691, a local law in relation to annual reporting on racial and gender disparities in STEM education for high school students. Reso 281, calling on the mayor's office to identify and implement measures to reduce disparities faced by businesses owned by women of color in obtaining and fulfilling public contracts. And lastly, Reso 283, calling on the MTA to train and provide non-law enforcement personnel to work in the subway system to handle issues with mentally ill customers. We acknowledge this month as honoring women like Shirley Chisholm, an outspoken champion for economic justice and racial/gender equity. Yet, for far too long, women have faced obstacles and barriers hindering their ability to flourish in education, politics, and the municipal workforce, and in business. According to the New York City Comptroller's 2022 report, only 29% of tech workers were women, a much lower share than the rest of the overall workforce. In addition, women entrepreneurs in the tech industry are outnumbered 3 to 1 by men, and women-founded companies still have fewer private funding opportunities. We continue to witness gender disparities across various sectors, as women only comprise about 27% of the tech workforce, with women of color making up less than 5%. This mirrors the disparities girls face in STEM education. According to the NYC Comptroller's... Sorry, I'll finish here. 2024 Annual Report on MWBE Procurement and FY23, only 5% of the $40 billion in city contracts went to businesses owned by women and people of color. I hope my colleagues could sign on to these bills. Thank you, Madam Majority Leader.
Thank you, Councilmember Lewis. I'd now like to recognize Councilmember Joseph, followed by Aviles, and then Narcisse.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you, Majority Leader. I rise today in solidarity with brothers and sisters in Haiti as they endure troubling times. As a Haitian-American member of the New York City Council who represents a large Haitian constituency in the 40th District in Brooklyn, my heart is with Haiti. The escalation of gang violence and the trafficking of guns into Haiti, which is a country that does not manufacture weapons, has created lawlessness and political instability that has brought immense suffering to the Haitian people. Innocent lives are being lost daily to sexual violence against women and girls, minus acts of brutality and bloodshed in the very neighborhoods we once called home. The criminal gangs perpetrating the reign of terror must be dismantled, along with the accomplices who made their terror possible. The harrowing images and stories emerging from Port-au-Prince and beyond are stained on our collective conscience. Mothers unable to feed their children, hospitals forced to turn away the injured, and families trapped in crossfires with no safe refuge. This is not the Haiti we dreamed of for our brothers and sisters and loved ones who are still there. This proud nation, the first free black republic in the world, that inspired movements of liberation worldwide, now titters towards an abyss of chaos perpetrated by power-hungry and corrupts. We cannot stand idly by as the Haitian people, democratic aspirations, and very lives are threatened. This is why I'm joining the resounding calls from the Haitian diaspora and human rights advocates across the globe for immediate assistance, for humanitarian aid, facilitate truly free, fair, and credible elections, demobilize gangs and trafficking of weapons into Haiti and terrorizing the population. So we send a lot of light and love to the Haitian people today. Thank you.
Councilmember Aviles, followed by Narcisse and Neely.
Good afternoon, colleagues. Today, I'm introducing Resolution 271 in support of the goals set forth by Electrify New York, a statewide coalition of advocates for environmental justice. As the coalition is focused on equitable transition as we shift to a green economy, among their goals are, number one, reducing ground transportation emissions by more than 50% by 2035; number two, ensuring that as the MTA transitions their bus fleet to zero emissions, there is an equitable rollout that prioritizes low-income communities of color that have borne the brunt of emissions for decades; and number three, advancing state-level legislation that encourages a just transition and that holds last-mile facility operators responsible for truck emissions. I encourage you, colleagues, to please sign in, and don't miss out on the opportunity to get 100% on your green card. Councilmember Botcher? Thank you.
Councilmember Narcisse, followed by Neely, and lastly, Carr.
Thank you, Madam Majority, and thank you, Madam Speaker. I want to express my deepest thanks to all my colleagues and friends who have reached out to offer their words of encouragement during the ongoing situation in Haiti. Growing up in Haiti a bit, I can personally attest to the abundance of beautiful resources and all the possession that Haiti, all the natural beauty. And if you have questions that I know natural beauty, I do. It is unparalleled when it comes to Haiti. And its people are resilient, vibrant, and kind. And during the darkness times, they still remain beautiful, want to help, want to solve problems. As the proverb goes, "De mon game on." Beyond every mountain, there's another mountain. That's what happened. Haitians have endured their fair share of hardships and challenges, and it seems that we are facing one of our toughest moments yet, with a nonexistent government and widespread control by gang, fear, hunger, and despair. All hospitals closed, all schools are closed, with many family across the nation. Now more than ever, it is imperative that Haitians themselves take the lead in shaping the future of our nation. With a medium age, can you imagine that 23 years old? They can work, they can do things. Haiti boasts on one of the youngest population in the Western Hemisphere. Therefore, it is meaningful solution to our challenges must actively involve the perceptive and contribution of the youth. Nevertheless, we cannot overcome these obstacles alone. I appeal to the international community to come together, to swiftly and provide sincere... When I mean sincere, because Haiti have a lot of natural resources, believe it or not. Because I spoke to architect, engineer, people that have been engaged, archaeologists and all. Support much needed from our brothers and sisters. Please, don't stay silent, because that's, as my colleagues just mentioned, the first black republic that actually talk about freedom. Together, let us pave the many brighter, more hopeful, and future of those Haitian people. We are proud nation, but unfortunately, we are finding ourselves in a bind again. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Carr. Oh, I'm sorry, pardon me. Councilmember Neely, then Councilmember Carr.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank our Speaker, Adams, Majority Leader, Chair Salamanca, Chair Hanks, and all my colleagues. Today, we... During my Brownsville Arts Center and Apartment application, we were able to increase the number of apartments available to the lowest-income households, those at 30% AMI, and those set aside for formerly homeless. The community asked for larger apartments. We were able to get HPD to commit to increase the size of all the apartments, including substantially increasing the size of the living rooms in the apartments. It is important the community be able to have the space in the building to ask HPD to give the CBOs 20 hours per month free to the community. I want to thank HPD for doing that. And as the community knows, parking is a challenge in my district. They have committed to... Somebody say yep. They have committed to releasing a parking study, loading study at the end of the month. As a preliminary commitment, they have agreed to make 10 new onsite overnight parking spaces available on East New York Avenue and on Dumont Avenue. Finally, I am proud that this project celebrates the talent of Brownsville community by including space for the arts and culture organizations that are the lifeblood of this community. I have no doubt that the Brownsville Arts Center will generate opportunities for so many of my community members and the youth who are interested in art, dance, and music. I urge my colleagues to join me in supporting this project. Thank you again, Madam Speaker, and I want to just ask everyone to wish Ms. Carolyn Jarrett of U-Gilroy Senior Center a 102nd birthday today. Yes, thank you, Madam.
Thank you, Councilmember Neely. I'd now like to call on Councilmember Carr.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I just want to state for the record of this proceeding that today is St. Joseph's Day, and it's a great day of significance to many Christians and, of course, Italian-Americans across the city of New York. And so on behalf of the Italian Caucus, I want to wish all the workers, all the dads, and all the Joes out there a very happy Feast Day. Bonafesta to all. Also of interest, we concluded our second annual St. Joseph's Day pastry contest, and once again, Tutel Calcho from Councilmember Palladino's district won the cannoli section, and I'm pleased to report that Mark's Bake Shop from my district won the custard zeppole section. So, great day for Queens and Staten Island. Not a queen sweep this time, but we look forward to having this contest again next year. Bonafesta, happy St. Joseph's Day to all.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Carr. My dad's a Joe, so I'll eat a cannoli for him. I'll now call on Speaker Adrian Adams to close today's stated meeting.
No sweeter way to do this, Councilmember Carr. Thank you very much. The stated meeting of March 19, 2024 is hereby adjourned.